Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item, or our next item that we want to take up right now is under Presentations, and we have a joint resolution for the Southfield Flower Day on Nine Mile. And Mr. Mayor?
Good evening again, Council.
Evening.
I would like to call up Don Frazier, Sherri Lavin, and John Adams. As you know, we, Mayor Lawrence, used to have Flower Day on the front lawn of the Civic Center. It was fairly popular for a while, and then sort of wound down. So, we didn't, we haven't done Flower Day for a year or two. And so, we've decided that we'd like to resurrect it, but instead of the growers bringing stuff to the lawn, there'd be wider variety and much more going on on Nine Mile. So, we also know that both Lavins and Three Ds suffered greatly last year from much-needed roadwork, which they appreciate. The street is safer, it's more attractive, but their business, both of the businesses took huge, huge hits, and they were forced to close early. So, this is a way to sort of help them out and get them back. We also, we're all about supporting Southfield businesses and small businesses, and so, we're very happy to present this resolution tonight, which I'd like to read. Joint resolution from the, this is from the mayor and the city council of Southfield Flower Day on Nine Mile, Saturday, May 20th, that's this Saturday, from, we're running roughly 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Whereas, "The beauty and charm of Southfield's neighborhoods are among the city's most precious assets. Attractive landscaping displays show pride in the community and add to property values of homes and businesses and the surrounding area." And whereas, working together with neighborhood associations, the Southfield Parks and Garden Club, and John Adams is here, the president of that, representing that organization, "The City of Southfield recognizes residents, businesses, that go the extra mile in their beautification efforts." Whereas, on Saturday, May 20th, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., the City of Southfield, in partnership with Three Ds and Lavin's Flower Land and the Southfield Parks and Garden Club, will host Flower Day on Nine Mile. And to help the residents and businesses spruce up their landscaping by offering free gardening tips, advice, along with special discounts to Southfield residents. Whereas, Three Ds Gardens at 24850 West Nine Mile Road, a family-owned business since 1969, was founded by Dorothy Frazier, whom many people remember, who started with just a wheelbarrow of homegrown corn, a bushel of tomatoes, and a few quarts of strawberries. Today, Three Ds Gardens boasts two locations and continues to deliver a unique combination of design, landscape services, bringing the joy of natural beauty to their clients. And whereas, Lavin's Flower Land at 24620 West Nine Mile Road, owned and operated by Sherri Lavin, is a successful lawn care and landscaping business built by hard work and dedication to detail. Sherri's passion for nature fills nine greenhouses on the property with flowers, plants, vegetables, and an open-air market with Michigan-grown seasonal fruits and vegetables and a variety of landscaping needs. And, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the City of Southfield invite Southfield residents and businesses to visit Three Ds and Lavin's Flower Land on Saturday, May 20th, 2017, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. to spring forward with planting landscaping needs and receive free gardening tips and advice. Be it resolved that we, the mayor and city council of the City of Southfield, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, do hereby declare May 20th, 2017, Southfield Flower Day on Nine Mile Road. Don?
Thank you.
I'm gonna ask them to say a word, but before I do, I just want to remind people that, you know, you go to Eastern Market, it's really crowded, there's no place to park, you have to, you know, take the time to drive down there. And their Flower Day is the 21st of May, when you could take all of this in the cool comfort of Southfield, Michigan, on Nine Mile, and beat that mess down in Eastern Market. So, we're recommending you come to Flower Day, support our two local businesses here. The Parks and Garden Club will be on hand with volunteers at both locations. So, Don or Sherri?
Hey, I'm Sherri Lavin. I'm happy to be a part of it. I'm happy to give back to Southfield. I've been here for eight years. We're gonna give free lunch away, we're gonna have music, we're gonna have some educated master gardeners instructing, some designers, and we're gonna have a great day. That's it. Oh, we're giving 20% off, too, to all Southfield residents, so.
Hello, thank you. Don Frazier. As he said, my mom started this. 1969, I went to school here, I grew up here. I've been serving the community, and I had a TV show here for a long time that Mayor remembers. And so, it's just a pleasure, and I want to thank the mayor, thank the city council for this opportunity. And I also want to thank you for our new road. It's beautiful, and before, you know, it was still even a little rough to get down, but now, it's nice and smooth, we have sidewalks. So, I really appreciate all that. I appreciate the opportunity for us to do this Flower Day, as he said, you know, to drive 30 minutes down to Eastern Market, and quite honestly, they don't give you that much of a discount anyway down there. So, you know, we're-
Definitely not the service.
And definitely not the service, no. So, you know, it's a pleasure, and I want to thank you. And we also will be having plenty of activities. We're gonna have activities for kids, face painting, bounce houses, things like that, and we'll be given 25% off also on our products for everybody with a Southfield ID. And city workers, and government, and senior citizens, of course, as always. So, I just want to thank you again, and thank you for this presentation.
Thank you.
I don't know if there's anything you want to add.
Well, the Southfield Parks and Garden Club has been a co-sponsor of Flower Day for quite a while, and it's all in the nature of trying to keep this city as pretty, and neat, and clean, and presentable as possible. So, I think this is a great idea to bring it back, Flower Day that is. I suggested a long time ago that we have it down on Nine Mile, and finally, they're gonna do it. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right.
Before you guys leave, I have a quick, I have a quick question, if you don't mind. There's two flower shops on Nine Mile. Is there anything that differentiates each other? Do you offer the same products, different products? You know, if, for consumers who are currently looking for maybe a specific item or product, is there anything that-
I design and install. I don't know what he does down there. We design and install, and install and deliver. We're all about customer service at Lavin's, way beyond. So, old-fashioned customer service, walk into your car.
Yeah, like I said, we've been doing this since 1969, and, you know, our customers come there, and they actually still come. People that have moved away to other cities still come to our place. And like, when you look on Google, there's different things people have written in, like, "I've been coming here since I was a little kid with my grandma. I come here with my grandkids now," because of that personal service that we offer. And as he said, you know, everybody gets a carryout to their car, and we've, we've just been doing the same thing for all these years, and it's, it's been working for the community. We've got people coming from Novi, Livonia, Northville, everywhere that they've, they've moved out of the city, some of them, and they still come to our place. So, you know, I think that we do a lot of the same things, we have a lot of the same products in our own way. So, you know, I mean, it's, they're flowers and, and things like that, so, but we all do our, our different things, and it just works together. And just like there's a gas station on every corner, people have their preferences-
They come to both of us.
So be it, you know, and it complements both of us, so. It's, it's a good thing for the city, it's good for us, it's good for Nine Mile, so, yeah.
It's good for prices.
That, too.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks again. All right, anything else, guys? All right. Next, we have one more presentation for Southfield Police Department Open House. Chief Hawkins?
And good evening, Council, Mayor, city officials, and members of our community. It looks like it's gonna be a fun-filled weekend. You know, we've got the family, or Flower Day on Saturday, and what I want to talk about, the police open house the following day on Sunday. And I thank you for the opportunity to introduce the Southfield Police Department's very first annual open house. And we invite members of the Southfield community to come join us for a fun-filled afternoon. An open house is a fun way to share the experiences, the equipment, and the people of the police department in, with the community that the police department serves. The open house is another example of the community-oriented ethic and philosophy that the Southfield Police Department adopted many, many years ago. The open house will be held this coming Sunday, May 21st, 2017, from 11:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. Again, that's Sunday, May 21st, from 11:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. The event is free, and it's open to all residents, visitors, and members of the business community in the City of Southfield. The open house will be a family-friendly event with activities for both adults and children. For example, there will be two police K-9 demonstrations, two child safety puppet shows, a bounce house, face painting, car seat safety inspections, bicycle maintenance checks, a driving simulator. The Oakland County Sheriff's Department's aviation unit helicopter will make a landing on the front lawn. The Detroit Police Department's mounted unit, which are the horses, will be joining us. There will be displays of vehicles and equipment from the Southfield Police Department's Special Entry and Response Team. The Southfield Police Department's Mobile Command Unit will be on display. The dispatch unit for the Southfield Police Department will have a demonstration. We will have recruiting, police recruiting personnel on site. For anyone who may be interested in becoming a police, a police officer in the City of Southfield, they can get information. And there will be food trucks and other refreshments. Most of the activities will take place in the south parking lot of the police department. The helicopter landing and the K-9 demonstrations, however, will take place on the municipal front lawn. Again, Council, and Mayor, and city officials, I appreciate the opportunity to share this information with the members of the community. All of the information that I just provided is available and can be found on the Southfield Police Department's webpage under the More News tab. And it also includes a downloadable flyer for the event. And again, this event Sunday, May 21st, from 11:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. And police personnel and I look forward to spending a fun-filled afternoon with the members of the community that we all serve. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Chief Hawkins. Counsel, any questions?
I'd like to ask Chief John, how come the hours are so short, meaning that church lets out, you know, 1 o'clock, you only have 1 o'clock, 2 to 3, 2 hours, instead of more so in the afternoon?
Well, we, we struggle with, with trying to get a time. You know, we, first of all, we didn't want it to be, this is our first time doing it, so we didn't want it to be an all-day event right now. We wanted to kind of do this on a trial basis. We kind of, after looking at different timeframes, we all kind of settled on this 11:00, 11:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. timeframe with, you know, we had some input from some members of the community, and city staff, and, and other officers inside. Now, what we plan to do after this successful launch this year is to take some lessons learned and figure out what we can do differently, if at all, next year in terms of timing, and in terms of the events and the activities that we offer. So, so what we see now, this year, may look much different next year when we do it.
I was just questioning the timing. In the morning on Sunday, that's all I was questioning. Most churches don't let out to 1 o'clock, 1:30.
All right, anything else, Counsel? All right, again, thanks again, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the agenda, we have no appointments for this evening. We do have one set of minutes to be approved, the regular meeting minutes of April 17th, 2017.
Mr. Chair, I move that the minutes of April 17th, 2017, be approved as presented.
Support.
All right, it's been properly moved and properly seconded.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
There's a correction that was just passed out, the 17th?
Yes, sir, we want to take the motion.
Include the correction.
What was the correction?
The correction was the motion of 2017 dot 100. Motion was, it stated originally motion by Mandelbaum, I should have said motion by Cruz.
Gotcha. Okay, everybody got that correction? Right, right. And you'll accept that as an amendment to your motion, Dan?
Yes.
Okay, so it's been moved, been moved by Mr. Brightwell and seconded by Ms. Morris with the friendly amendment or change to the meeting minutes of April 17th, 2017. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Next, we move on to our consent agenda. We have just six items to speak to today. The first one was dealt with Automation Alley Smart Zone and its approval, amended, and restated Automation Alley Smart Zone Agreement for the Cities of Southfield and Troy, the Joint Local Development Finance Authority and Michigan Economic Development Corporation. And there are a number of key aspects that we could speak to about this particular agreement. Just listing off a couple of them, just letting us know that this is a 15-year extension of the LDFA, the CPT, and Automation Alley Smart Zone. It updates tax capture estimates of approximately 14 million over the 15-year timeframe. $50,000 a year in support to Automation Alley. It extends the boundaries of the LDFA, CTP, and Automation Alley Smart Zone, increased collaboration with the Automation Alley, City of Troy, as well as the City of Port Huron, St. Clair Innovation, and Technology Smart Zone. Move financially support the business incubator and accelerator, relocate the Southfield Michigan Works Office. It's gonna help us out with some significant public, public infrastructure improvements, and improve marketing and branding for the area. Also, there'll clearly be, because it is a partnership, Troy and Port Huron will benefit in this as well. The anticipated City of Southfield's tax capture is estimated, as I stated earlier, at $14 million over this 15-year timeframe. The next item up was the approval of the agreement for the reconstruction of Franklin Road from 11 Mile to Telegraph. And so, the Michigan Department of Transportation has presented the contract documents for the reconstruction of Franklin to 11 Mile, from 11 to Telegraph. The proposed project is gonna include a concrete, concrete, concrete reconstruction of 11 Mile and Franklin intersection with a roundabout. I'm sure everybody's happy to hear about that, another roundabout here. It is gonna be, it's gonna also include a road diet, which will make, change it from a four-lane road to a three-lane conversion. This is because of the roundabout there. And I think that's pretty much does it for us. The Southfield share for this, well, the cost is, comes out to, estimated cost $1,660,077. The next one is approval for a cost participation agreement of the Loser Road Reconstruction from Civic Center Drive to south of 11 Mile. And again, work, now, this instance, working with the Road Commission of Oakland County, has contract documents for the reconstruction of Loser from Civic Center to Northwestern Highway. This proposed project is going to include all-new concrete pavement and curbs from Civic Center Drive to Northwestern Highway, and spot concrete repairs from Northwestern Highway to south of 11 Mile Road. The construction is scheduled to begin in mid-July, and is to be completed approximately 1st of November. Also, should be noted that this project will be a 24-hour project, meaning that we'll have extended hours for construction, with it being in a fairly non-residential area. We're figuring that we can move this project a lot faster yet it does, so it'll be less barrels for at least amount of time, right? We like that as well. Estimated cost at 1.9, 1.9 million. And next, we had the receipt of bids for debris removal services for Public Works and the Public Recreation Departments. So, the, the purchasing department solicited bids for 14 different types of road repair and maintenance materials and debris hauling. Two complete responses came in. Ellsworth Industries of Plymouth, Michigan was selected, and they were the lowest bidder. We also have a request from Plum Hollow Country Club to, to be granted permission for aerial firework display on June 28th, 2017, with a potential rain date of June 30th. I think this is a fairly routine request that they've done in the past, so they're just coming back to us again for another opportunity to have their fire show. And then, the last item on the consent agenda is the request to purchase 13 Dell tablets for elected officials, the city administrator, the city attorney, and the city planner. Every council meeting we, is, requires us to have an agenda packet prior to the meeting that describes each of the items that are gonna come before us at the, at the next meeting for approval. Presently, this is a totally paper process and requires 13 copies of each document that can range up to a packet of over 300 pages per meeting. So, again, the request is to, in an attempt to go paperless, eventually, of course, there'll be some transition time before we all totally get there, but the ideal is that we can be a lot more efficient, and save some money, and save some trees by going in this direction. So, the request is to purchase these Dell tablets in the amount, total amount of $23,254. All right, that concludes, yep, that concludes each of our agenda items, Counsel. Entertaining the motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent agenda items A through F.
Support.
All right, it's been properly moved and properly seconded by Ms. Morris, and seconded by Mr. Brightwell, that we approve consent agenda items A through F. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda item, items passed. We have one public hearing for this evening. The standard special assessment resolutions for City Center Advisory Board and Special Assessment for operating the purposes, and set public hearing of confirmation date for June 12th. Mr. Crowe?
All the way.
So much for going paperless.
Right.
Yeah, we better stick, we better stick to the paper.
While this is warming up, I'll give an introduction. Tonight, we're here to consider a public hearing of necessity for extending the Special Assessment District for a five-year period at 5 cents per square foot for non-residential for the purposes of operation and maintenance, placemaking, pedestrian amenities, and promotional development activities when, within the Southfield City Center District. On April 17th, the honorable body adopted standard Special Assessment Resolutions 1 and 2 for the proposed special assessment, and that that evening, we reconfirmed the extended City Center District, as well as setting tonight's public hearing of necessity. So, I could, I'll, I'll start with, I guess we'll have to start with the screens. So, just a little history. It was 1992 that the first Special Assessment District was established as part of a principal shopping district that's authorized by the state, with a very modest goal of 1 cent per square foot of non-residential. And that money was rolled into the establishment of the plaza at Central Park Boulevard, and for the landscape maintenance of Central Park Boulevard. Over the past 20-some years, the mission of the Special Assessment District has grown to include placemaking, marketing, and special events. The foundation for everything that we do is the Sustainable Southfield Master Plan, which the Council approved in June of 2016. And as you recall, we did a very extensive public input, public workshops, and 20 weeks of social media input. And the top three ideas that came out, regardless of how they were asked, was walkability and connectivity throughout the city, including sidewalks, bike paths, and increased pedestrian amenities, street and road repair, and redevelopment and renovation of older commercial properties. And these three tenants have been incorporated into the mission of the City Center District as well. As you recall, this city council also established a number of sub-areas, including the City Center District, to focus on placemaking and branding. Each of our sub-areas has its own unique characteristics. But, the City Center's mission has been to create and maintain a vibrant 24/7 pedestrian-friendly mixed-use environment, and the existing district can be walked, almost the entire district, within a half a mile or 10-minute walk. But, things started to change, as you recall. It was about 2009 that we had the Great Recession. Property taxes fell, our buildings started to become more and more vacant, and the business owners and property managers came to us and said, "We need help with attraction and retention of professionals, and placemaking is very important." So, we adopted a strategic approach to the placemaking, which- So we adopted a strategic approach to the placemaking, which included marketing and branding, special events, and urban design and a concept vision. This is just an example of some of the special events that the City Center Business District has supported. Art, food truck rallies, the Eat to the Beat concerts, the after-hour events, Face to Face Project, Family Fun and Safety Night, and we are cosponsoring the fourth Summer Solstice run with the Spirit Parade this year. We've also focused on the public realm. And many of you know, there about eighteen percent of land use in most communities is the public realm, and it should be treated as such. And it's our, it's our job and duty to invest in the public realm, to help spur private development. Some of the noted projects that the City Center has supported with matching funds and others over the last several years includes City Center Drive, Civic Center Drive, the installation of the front lawn loop, matching grants for Evergreen Road, and most recently, the Northwestern Highway Service Drive pathway. As many people know, Evergreen Road was a major redevelopment. The City Center leveraged a hundred thousand dollars with the city's match to attract seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in the Transportation Alternative Program grant specifically for placemaking such as bike paths and stormwater mitigation. These are many of the amenities that the City Center partnered with through hiring consultants, providing technical advice, purchasing, approximately three hundred thousand dollars in streetscape amenities over the last five to six years, and this is a very comprehensive list of the items that have been focused, especially along Evergreen Road, but is, is installed throughout the entire district. And then it doesn't take much imagination to think back at what these intersections used to look like before the city was involved in some of the work that the City Center has done. These are, I'll just go through real quickly some before and after. This is the intersection at the northern entrance of the municipal campus near the library, before and after. Tremendous change in the south entrance to the municipal complex, not only with the roundabout, the art installation, the crosswalks, but the front lawn loop. And again, three and a third times around is, equals one mile, and it helps promote that thirty minutes of heart healthy activity. And even today, on a beautiful day like today, there's kids out there playing ultimate frisbee, people walking, walking their dogs, walking strollers, biking, sitting on the benches and enjoying the views. Landscape medians, again, is part of track, traffic calming and to provide safe harbor, refuge for pedestrians crossing, so they don't have to play Frogger as they cross Evergreen Road. Includes hanging baskets and flags and banners that are supported by the City Center. The decorative crosswalks, the mid-block crossing, again, all of these are part of a brand that we've been establishing over the last several years. And the crosswalks and the multi-use path are being used by residents, businesses, visitors, and students of Lawrence Tech. Again, a very successful event, but the venue was created between the roundabouts to host these types of events on the front lawn and, and to expand into the public realm. And we spent a lot of time working on the details of coming up with proper wayfinding signage, coming up with the maps and the directional for the pedestrian, the details of the municipal campus and the wayfinding throughout the city center, and making sure that we are identifying all the businesses, hotels, and significant housing development throughout the district. And even down to the minutia of identifying and celebrating our historic sites along the corridor. And these templates now can be used throughout the district and throughout the city. Stormwater and low-impact design was very important to receiving the Transportation Enhancement Program grants. Everybody knows our famous rain garden, which filters thirty-two thousand cubic feet. That first inch of rainwater is the most dirty. It collects all the pollutants, the grease, the oil, the dirt, and we're cleaning and filtering it before we're putting into our streams and stormwater sewers. The pervious pavers, again, help to collect some of the sheet draining from the sidewalks and the bike paths. And remember, we actually had goat paths and gaps in our sidewalk system along Evergreen Road and Civic Center before we embarked on these major improvements. Art installation, the City Center has been very active in supporting the installation of arts and helping to defray the cost of those installations. And again, incorporating complementary streetscape elements throughout the district. And for the efforts of the city and combination with the City Center, we've received four major awards to date. We have a couple other that have been recently submitted. But what that shows is that our peers throughout the state recognize the efforts that the city has undertaken with the partnership of the City Center. Another project I'm really proud of, again, an area that had a goat path, and we were hearing anecdotal stories of Lawrence Tech students taking Greyhound bus from all over the country, getting off at the transportation center at Loser and Eleven Mile and walking down with their backpack and their luggage to the campus along Northwestern Highway, fighting their way through the weeds. And to continue the connectivity, to continue the branding, and to provide healthy respite for all the businesses, the students, the residents, we've further connected our major sidewalk system from Civic Center up to Corporate Drive. Again, here's the concept plan. This was all sponsored by the City Center. Red Pole Park, we've got some major announcements that will hopefully be bringing back to the council in your June meetings. But this is part of creating a series of outdoor rooms and getting us on the map. And the contractor worked right up to the week before Christmas last year to get the pavement down. Now they're doing the final landscaping, grading, and installation of the final elements along this pathway. And I can tell you that the asphalt was not even cool yet, steam was coming off and people were using it. And we'd like to believe our great relationship with Lawrence Tech University in establishing the town and gown relationship, that a lot of the things that we have done have been in partnership with Lawrence Tech going from a traditional commuter school to a full residential campus. They had no problem with attracting students, but they were losing some students after years one, two, and three because they weren't getting the full experience of living in a university campus town. And we've seen tremendous growth, and it's been a great symbiotic relationship. We've had two new dorms recently approved. We had the biomedical engineering facility, a new athletics, and they've been working with us on extending the multi-use pathways. Here's Russ Residence Hall that was opened in fall of two thousand fifteen, hundred-and-sixty beds. Taubman Complex, the biomedical engineering, which was open in spring, summer of two thousand sixteen. Lawrence Tech's Phase One Athletic Field, over a million-dollar all-weather athletic field. And they see the increase in enrollment and even off, college visits by having the complex and by expanding their sports programs, which they require their student athletes to live on campus, which are putting more student life twenty-four-seven in our city. And these are some long-term future plans. Also, many council members were recently at the dedication ceremony of their new three-hundred-and-eight-bed dormitory, which council recently approved, and they have very ambitious plans, they have that open by fall of two thousand eighteen. That'll put over a thousand students, or more than twenty-five percent of their full-time student population, on campus, living throughout the college semesters here in Southfield. City Center Two was our first overlay development district, which was a mixed-use development, and you've seen the expansion of a variety of restaurants, but they have a dental office, office tenants above, a hair salon, and other retail operators in addition to the restaurants. Arborlofts was a hundred and fourteen thousand square-foot building built in the late nineteen-sixties, early seventies. They had an eighty-five percent vacancy rate only four or five years ago. And they repurposed that into a hundred and seventy-one beds. They've been close to a hundred percent occupied over these years. And as Lawrence Tech need for additional rooms has gone down, the private market has gone up, and we recently heard they'll be breaking ground on their garden apartments within the next month or so. And there's an image of the garden apartments that the council approved. You look across the street from the library, you see twelve thousand square foot Phase One of the Traveler's Tower retail going up. Again, when they surveyed their tenants, they wanted more variety of restaurants and retail within walking distance along the corridor. There's an image of the concept and an image of construction within the last two weeks. Vibe Credit Union, they wanted to come into the district because they seen the positive changes that were happening based on being pedestrian-focused and oriented. And then, as you know, the city has been actively marketing and developing a vision plan for the eight-point-one-five acres across the street at Evergreen and Civic Center Drive. Again, and just real quickly show some of the mixed-use concepts that we're very hopeful will, will come to the city, based on all the efforts that the city has worked on. As you know, the Parks Department, with the support of the city, applied for DNR grant to help develop Phase One and create a civic park for year-long programming and events. We've worked with some developers recently about coming in and doing off-campus student housing in close proximity to the university, and that market is warming up. And one of, you know, a success story that we all like to champion is Dur Automotive, who relocated and consolidated three separate offices into the city of Southfield, purchased ninety-six thousand square-foot building, added another hundred thousand square feet. And one of the things that they said to us when they came in is that they wanted to be part of the City Center and what was going on. And Ms. Banks and myself met with two of their senior managers today. They had some questions about the district, and they reconfirmed their excitement about being a partner in this expanded district. As you know, Lawrence Tech with, with the city and the Smart Zone has opened up their new collaboratory on Civic Center. And then, as we've recently announced, the City Center has fully funded a year-one trial of a bike-share program throughout the district, not only the existing district, but the expanded district as well. So in summary, the shaded area is the existing City Center District. The red line shows the expanded district, which is consistent with the future land use plan of Sustainable Southfield. And it's many of these businesses, the mayor, Ms. Freeman, and myself met with Eaton Corp, gave this presentation, they're very excited to be a partner. Dur is very excited to be a partner, and others have reached out to us about the possibilities of expanding the district and expanding the placemaking and the special events that the City Center has worked so diligently on in the last three to five years. So with that, I'll, I'll sit down for the public hearing. I've got a couple other comments to make after the public hearing's been closed, and I'll be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Crowe. That said, we'd like to open up this public hearing, so if there's anyone here today that would like to speak to the City Center Advisory Board Special Assessment as presented here, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Ken Peterson, and I am president of the Condominium Association at Five Thousand Town Center. And good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city officials. I'm very proud to be here because I'm a member of the City Center Advisory Board. I sit on that board as treasurer currently, and I've lived in Southfield for twenty-five years. So I came here about the same time that the City Center Special Assessment District was created. And I've seen more contributions and positive performance from this board in the past five years than in the previous twenty. We've got a good thing going on. I don't know if you sense the excitement within the City Center, but I do, and I want to continue it. I would like to see approval of what is a fairly complex and arduous process, because this is a Special Assessment District. There's a lot we have to go through to, to make this happen, and I would like to see this progress appropriately. So with that, I will thank you for listening, and hopefully you'll keep the process moving. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, this is a public hearing, so anyone, again, that would like to speak to the City Center Advisory Board Special Assessment, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please, and you have three minutes.
My name is Geraldine Amato, and I live currently here in Southfield, near Nine Mile and Evergreen. The time is running while I make that announcement, but regarding that lengthy presentation, I can only say a few things in this limited time restraint that I're giving public comment. But master plans are controlled by the same people who control the monetary system and the banks. They do not come out of, they're federally syndicated. They don't come out of the hearts and minds of the locals. The local people are imposed upon to conform to these and to make maybe superficial adjustments to them is what is happening here, which is a typical way of doing business on this coast-to-coast federal reservation, which is controlled by international banksters under the U.S. UCC, the Uniform Commercial Code. The republic does not exist. We have, we are a colony, as it was in the beginnings of this nation. A few people tried to get it on a different track, and for three years after the Revolutionary War, it petered along until the Constitutional Conventions, and then we have what we have today, a central government now in Washington, D.C., that's aggrandizing its powers. But what we're doing here at the local level is merely showcase things and also keeps many businesses busy for a time with commercial contracts. But we're doing these improvements and these superficial adjustments on a rotten structure, underpinning structure. If we don't address the fact that we are not in a sustainable, truly sustainable Southfield or anywhere else in this nation, this economy is built on waste and extravagance, we are deceived in the curriculums of the public schools, the entertainment world, the so-called media, communications media it's supposed to be, but it's manipulations and corruptions and deceptions media. We are under grand delusion, and unless there's enough good people willing to take the vanguard, we will find that such improvements as are talked about today has no sustainability. The structure underneath is crumbling spiritually, physically, financially, in every way you can imagine. And unless the good people here get under the control, get under the counsel of the Holy Spirit or the sovereign God Almighty, we are lost as a free nation.
Thank you very much. Again, this is still a public hearing, we're still, anyone still interested in making comments as it relates to this special assessment, please come forward, again, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Rick Severson.
Can you lift the mic up? Can you lift your mic up a little bit, please?
I'm speaking on behalf of my mother, who owns the property at two-one-five-five-one Eleven Mile Road, and has never really felt like it's a part of the City Center. And now the line goes up and just grabs her property, goes off. So my first question is, what, what is the assessment for...
Through the chair. I did, I did receive a letter from Ms. March, which I was going to read into the record after the public hearing. Her, her special assessment would be a hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety cents a year based on estimated square footage of three thousand fifty-eight square feet.
So in that regard, she has no contest for, for this amount. The presentation was very impressive. We've lived in Southfield all our lives, and it's all great stuff. We appreciate that. We've lived in Southfield all our lives and it's all great stuff. We appreciate that. Now, that puts us in the city center, I guess, for the long term, for future assessments and what have you. But this, you have any? Yeah, it's just it's just a property that has a daycare center and it's very low margins and that kind of thing, so. I guess that's all we had to say.
All right. Thank you very much. Again, still, we're in a public hearing. Are there any other comments? Anyone else wish to speak to this issue? If there's no one else, we're going to close the public hearing. Terry, you said you had something to add before we go to council?
Yes, I did. I did want to recognize that Ms. March did drop a letter off. She did not leave a phone number at the time. I did go out to the property, her subject property at 21551 West 11 Mile. As they stated, there's an existing childcare center. I did speak with the owner-operator of the childcare center. She had indicated at the time that it probably is going to be her responsibility to cover those costs. But I did want to note for the record, and I appreciate the fact that they did show up at the public hearing, that they initially objected to it. I think because partly was a misunderstanding that this was an increase in taxes. With regard to why the property across the street wasn't included, we looked at the existing zoning and we used frontage of properties that were zoned commercial and having frontage on 11 Mile to determine where we drew the line. And that's the only reason why those properties across the street were not originally included in in this expanded district.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Crowe?
Just that there is a prepared recommended resolution in your packet. And you would be, in summary, adopting standard special assessment resolution number three, declaring the public improvements a necessity. And also adopting standard special assessment resolution number four, scheduling the public hearing to confirm the special assessment role for June 12, 2017 at 7:30 PM in the city council chambers.
All right, council?
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Mr. Mandelbaum?
Mr. Crowe, the, there's currently a special assessment district. Is that the same five cents per square foot or is this a raise for those currently in there, in the district as well?
We're on the year three of our current three-year assessment, which will end on June 30, 2017. And our current year assessment is five cents. One of the, this this was a three-year incremental increase from three cents to four, four cents to five. One of the, one of the comments that the board took to heart is capping the five-cent assessment and extending it out five years so that they know there will be no increase or surprises over the next five years. And that was a recommendation of the City Center Advisory Board.
Okay. Thank you.
Council, anything else? Mr. Mayor?
Nothing on the council. I would just mention that I am a member of the City Center Advisory Board. And it's a tremendously hard-working group that represents many of the major property owners in the existing city center. And as the council well knows, and I'm really directing this to anybody who's listening in the audience, our future really is in redevelopment and renewal. And the City Center Advisory Board, with the support of the land, the landowners in the in the district, have really stepped up to help and partner with us in refreshing our our city center and in overall renewal. The the, just the excitement alone over the redevelopment of Evergreen Road has really kick-started a lot of other interest in the city of Southfield. And this, I think, is really very, very important piece of our continued efforts to redevelop and renew our city. So I am very supportive of expanding the district and continuing the five-cent per square foot annual special assessment. Thank you.
Mr. Pocassi?
Yeah, a question to to the city planner, is that address 215551, is that your?
21551.
Yeah, that's childcare center?
Yeah.
Is it, what's the zoning on that property? Is it residential? Or is it office or what?
I believe it's office.
We have a lot of childcare uses in residential property, I'm just asking.
Well, this this is a commercial childcare as opposed to a group childcare home. This is a commercially licensed childcare center.
Is that near Elysha Road?
No, it's it's right on 11 Mile, closer to where the bend, where 11 Mile.
East side of the city?
Well, it's, I mean, the closest intersection, it's it's closer to Corporate Drive. If you come up Corporate Drive and turn right on 11 Mile, it's Kitty Corner from, I think it's the new Noah's Market.
Who's Market?
That's across the street. It's Kitty Corner from the Noah's Market Shopping Center on the south side of 11 Mile, east of Corporate Drive.
Okay. Yeah. Then it's on the, really on the south side of 11 Mile Road.
It's actually the the very easternmost piece.
Why wasn't that part of it before? It was expanded, talking about?
Right here. This is where it's located.
Yeah, yeah. But was it previously on for assessment?
No, this is part of the expanded district. It's part of the expanded district. So this would be an addition.
In the property's own office?
I believe so.
I just want to make sure that residential property wasn't?
Well, residential uses are are not assessed, but this has a commercial.
That's why I'm asking the question.
This this is based on the assessor's, assessor's roles. It's assessed as a commercial property.
Is it zoned commercial?
It's also zoned office. But it's assessed as a commercial property. We do not assess residential properties. It's non-residential. And this is based on the assessor's.
No, I was just asking the question for clarification when you have childcare now in residential subdivisions now that are not on any commercial basis. And this was the same kind of use unless it's zoned office. In other words, all childcare businesses should be then zoned for other uses than residential?
Well, there's the group childcare home that's in the residential district up to six, but this is a commercial.
It's going to 12 now.
Well, that's, that's, excuse me, there's family childcare up to six. Group childcare from seven to 12 is a special use in a residential zoned district. But this is a commercially operated daycare center in our office district.
All right. I would like to have you make sure, you don't have to do it tonight, but I'd like to make sure that it is zoned office as opposed to to residential that's chosen as childcare.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Brightwell?
Yep. I'm I'm a strong believer in this, in this project, you know, the, the Center Advisory Board. And I've seen the excellent work that has been done and also the foresight in the the planning. But, Mr. Crowe, just to sort of respond to the respondent, I mean, the, yeah, the respondent, I see the assessed amount be 152.90.
That's correct.
Just to give them, just to give them an idea, how will this specifically benefit them?
Well, we continue to make improvements in the public realm, specifically for the pedestrians. We do landscaping, gateway improvements, the wayfinding, the signage. We host special events and we have a website that the business can link into. So that if someone's searching, whether they're coming here for the first time, whether they're looking for employment, looking for a house or a student, this business would get extra marketing that hopefully will increase their business, which ultimately, if they have a healthy tenant, helps the owner have the rent paid. It's an indirect benefit.
Right.
But it's no different than the indirect benefit that many of the other businesses get. It's, you know, part of, as we said, is the attraction and retention. Now, that could be, we could use that as a student argument, you can use that as a housing residential argument or a business tenant argument.
So would this fall in the category, category of rising tide of support all boats?
You could, you could say that. And I think that some of our our larger businesses, like the Town Center, has not seen any immediate improvement adjacent to their property, but they see the benefit of what Evergreen Road and Civic Center has done. Now, we're working towards with the city engineer on the road resurfacing and a road diet. Next year, we'll be doing additional infill with the sidewalks and the gaps. We'll be installing additional wayfinding signage. The fact that Lawrence Tech's expanding, again, provides, whether you're a grad student with with childcare needs, this puts this business on the radar of people who are actively involved in the city center.
And the individuals, if I understand it correctly, either Mr. Peters or you mentioned that this assessed amount will be fixed for five years? Okay. Okay, that's.
Yeah, I would just interject, it's also, this is about property values. This investment helps property values in the city for for everyone, whether they're on the on the edge of the district or right in the center of it.
All right. Anything else from council?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the standard special assessment resolutions number three and number four for the City Center Advisory Board Special Assessment, P1174, as mentioned in our agenda.
And if I could add a friendly amendment and to specifically schedule public hearing to confirm the special assessment role for June 12?
June 12, 2017.
Support. It's been properly moved by Councilman Mandelbaum and seconded by Councilman Brightwell that council adopt the special, the standard special assessment resolutions three and four, as well as set a private, uh, private, like, public hearing, we don't want to do it in private. A public hearing for confirmation on June 12, 2017. Is there any discussion? Counsel, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then we're all set and we'll be back here on the 12th then. We have no site plans to look at today. Now we're into communications. Our first request for recognition was Gerard Mullin, who I don't believe is here. My second request was Pamela Gerald. Our third request was Geraldine Amato. Please come forward and have three minutes.
Good evening. I come here to try to call attention to the fact that we are in the throes of decadence, our nation. And we need to think seriously about quit quitting playing along with the masterminds, the overlords program and begin thinking our own thoughts and getting under the counsel of the Holy Spirit of the sovereign God Almighty and get our own personal marching orders and moving on out. There will not be any perfectly righteous government on the face of the earth until Shiloh come. But in the meantime, the good people, as imperfect as they may be, need to be about the almighty God's business of resisting evil while we still have the vitality, the mental sanity, the emotional equanimity and some resources within our control to do so. If we become divested of these resources, mental sanity, you can see it's going in our nation, emotional equanimity, physical vitality, all of these attributes of optimum living are being eroded by those who control our lives. Our resources are being dwindled and everything we possess is not owned by us. The wealth of this nation has been confiscated. Those who do well have been going along with the program. Anyone in isolation who resists is cut off from the amenities of going along with the masters, the overlords program. We are a colony of the internationalists. That's why we've been suckered into the global economy. What is done here and these government subsidiaries of the federal government are federally syndicated. They don't come from the hearts and minds of the locals. The locals have nothing to do with what's happening in this nation unless they take charge for themselves. Liberty, as they say, is not free. But once it dies in the heart of people, there's no effort to retain it and to secure it and to redeem it. We are losing all that is valued for human life on this earth. And I pray to God that there's enough people willing to make the sacrifices that are needed to take this nation off the track that the overlords and the masterminds are taking it. The masons, the builders are about building against nature, worshiping the grand architect. The architect is about rearranging everything God has created to our detriment. That's why so many of us are not feeling well.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Amato. All right, your time is up. Thank you very much. Your time is up. Thank you. Ms. Amato, please, your time is up, ma'am. Your time is up. Will you please? Thank you. All right. Our next request for communication is Ms. Karen Schrock.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here, Karen Schrock. I'm the chair of the Commission on Senior Adults. I live at 23545 Rockingham. And I'm here to remind council members that we have our kickoff event scheduled. I brought flyers for next Wednesday, May 24, from 6 to 8 here in the pavilion. I'd like to thank the mayor, the planning director and our administrator for all their help and support in planning this event. We will have follow-up meetings and discussions, but we would really appreciate it if each of you could attend and show your support for this important effort that the city of Southfield is undertaking. So that's all I wanted to say, to invite you again and to hope that you will be there to represent the city of Southfield at this event. Thank you.
All right. And thank you very much. That concludes our communications portion of the meeting. Counsel? All right, let's start down with Mr. Brightwell.
My, my company pretty much deals with the citywide. We finally got our financial numbers for our last fiscal year. And I wanted to commend the city administrator, the, his, his team and also the council and for the good job that that was done financially in the city. As the finance chair, I play, play, pay close attention to the financial health of the city. And as the city administrator will probably attest, that one of my main things is to make sure that we are aware of the financial health of the city. that we are aware of the financial health of the city. So with that, I will just indicate that we had an increase in the general fund last year of $5.5 million, and that's attributable to the hard work of the administration, keeping track of expenses, making sure expenses did not exceed revenue. And that is also a testament to the direction that we will be going in on a going-forward basis, making sure that all departments are following their budget and, but I just do really want to thank the administrator and his team for following through on making sure that we are a financially healthy city.
Thank you very much. Ms. Morse?
Yes, I'd just like to make an announcement on a topic that I'm sure that we all believe is of major importance to Southfield residents. I'm so excited that we have been working on a presentation that we can share with the residents. So on Thursday, June 1st, at 6:00 PM, I'm going to be hosting a town hall on the roads in the Southfield Public Library Auditorium, and I'm asking for council support and participation. I know I've already spoken with Mayor Seiver, and he supports this event, and we have discussed how important this topic is to all residents and city officials. So come out and learn about how your road bond dollars are being spent, upcoming water and sewer projects, as well as road construction projects slated for 2017 and 2018. All Southfield residents are invited.
Thank you. Mr. Mandelbaum?
Yes, just two quick announcements. One is this Saturday, we do have Flower Day, but also there's the Tone Up for Tune Ups that is taking place at 9:00 AM at the Covenant Presbyterian Church on 10 Mile. It goes to help auto repairs for local residents so they can continue with their job and schooling and whatnot. So you can, if you have a chance to participate, I believe you may still be able to register. The other thing is, there's, over the weekend, I was bombarded with many pothole questions, and as Councilwoman Morris mentioned, she's going to be talking about some of the, how that's, the millage is being funded and the road bonds are working. But the city has a, an app, Southfield Connect, for Android and Apple, that has a function under Tell Us, that you can take a picture, a video, you can geo-locate where a pothole is located, and it goes directly to Public Works. So please take advantage of that. The more people we have telling us where those potholes are, the better we can assess the situation and fill those potholes as quickly as we can. We also have a 24-hour hotline, a message line, 248-796-4000. You can leave a message anonymously, you can leave your name if you'd like, but the Public Works Department does monitor that daily, and they just ask that you leave a precise location, or as precise as you can make it, and they will get out there and fill the potholes. They strive for 48-hour turnaround, but everything is also weather-dependent. So the more we, the more residents tell us where potholes are located, the better we can facilitate filling those potholes as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ficassi?
Yeah, last Wednesday, the mayor had, had a dinner and invited three DNR specialists and a biologist for the, for deer control. And what, it was a great example of, you know, for me at least, to see what the deer were doing and when they were doing it, and what we could do to answer some of the complaints on, on the herd that are in Southfield. I've been looking up since that time, they have what they call Deer Out. It's about $27 a gallon, it does 4,000 square feet, and it comes with a sprayer. And if anybody buys fertilizer today, you get a big bag of fertilizers between $25 and $30 some dollars a bag these days. So $27 would be right in the range of putting on, you know, 5,000 square feet of fertilizer. And I think that the garden club, and sorry I didn't bring it up when they were here, but they could maybe give some information out to residents that have deer problems that it is available. And lastly, I'd like us to look into possibility of getting it wholesale, where we might dispense it from Parks and Recreation if somebody needs it and has a, a problem with deer. It does most of the foliage that is a concern to our residents and flowers. And my son uses it all the time, and it works, and that's the Deer Out. It's, and it's about like, like I said, about $27 for a quart, 4,000 square feet. But I would like us to participate in answering some of the problems that people are having and showing them a way in which they can, can take care of it. The bottom line was, when we were listening to the three DNR people, was that there really isn't a great solution without spending quite a bit of money. Ann Arbor was paying $1,000 a deer. I think they killed sharpshooters, had 57 deer that were removed. And there are other things they could do as far as shots and operations and those kinds of things, but to me, everything that you would do and turn around to, to address would cost quite a bit of money. So anyways, for $27, whatever you can get a deal on it, it sure works. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Seymour, did you have your hand up?
No.
You didn't? Okay, sorry. Very good. All righty. Mr. Mayor?
We have one other thing happening this weekend that I wanted to bring up. This is the 47th Annual Rouge River Rescue. It will start at 8:00 AM, run from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and people should gather at Beechwoods Rec Center, and then they'll be taken to the various improvement sites along the Rouge, Rouge River. Again, that's Saturday, May 20th, 8:00 AM to 1:00, 1:00 PM. Volunteers are needed to come out for that effort. I also want to mention that last week, we went to the grand opening of the Nomad Grill. We're always looking for good new restaurants in Southfield, and the Nomad Grill is now open for lunch and dinner. And once, it's part of the new Best Western Premier Hotel, former Holiday Inn on Telegraph at 696. And once the hotel is open, which is any day now, they'll also be doing breakfast, and they have a happy hour during the week. And finally, I have a request from the Public Works Department. A lot of people, and I've gotten lots of contact calls in my office regarding the brush and stick pickup. Because of, we have a number of storms this winter, plus the big wind in March, as well as, it's now that time of year, people are out and trimming back strawberry and trimming trees. There's been an awful lot of tree limbs and debris to pick up at the curb. And so they're running, there are three chippers out, going up and down streets, they're running behind. So we're asking for patience, but also, in driving about the city, I noticed that a number of people have put out very small piles of twigs. And the problem with that is that these tend, when, if they're picked up and go into the chipper, they really don't chip. Instead, they go, many times they go sideways, they get stuck in the chute, and then the chipper gets jammed, and that obviously slows the process of picking up the larger limbs. Where really, the chippers are meant for limbs that are, you know, three, four, five inches in diameter, and, and should be put out of the curb at four to six inch, or rather four to six foot lengths. And if you have little piles of twigs or small branches, they really should be broken up and put into leaf bags, yard waste bags, or into compost cans. That's a faster way to get rid of them. I've seen some little piles of twigs at the curb. They're more than likely not going to be picked up. So I urge residents to cooperate, help us on this so that we can move the process along more quickly. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Zorn, anything from the administration?
I have no, no items this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Madam Attorney, we have one item from you. Amendment of ordinance?
One item. Thank you, Mr. President. This is an amendment to ordinance number 1670. That ordinance was enacted by council just on February 13th of this year. And as I indicated in the discussion that we had on this issue on May 8th at a committee of the whole structure, there were a few cleanup items that we needed to do, that we had, had some numbering that was not correct. And so we thought the best way to do it is just indicate all of the cleanup that we had. I think there were only about a half a dozen items. Bring it back before council and introduce and enact a new ordinance, taking into account all of those items. And so that's what's before you this evening. At the May 8th discussion, there was a consensus of council to move this forward tonight for approval and introduction of that ordinance.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mandelbaum?
I'd like to make a motion that we introduce ordinance number, the amendment to ordinance number 16.
Would be to approve it.
Approve the amendment to ordinance number 1670.
All right, it's been properly moved by Mr. Mandelbaum and seconded by Ms. Morris that we accept the amendment to ordinance number 1670. Is there any discussion? All those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, changes are accepted. Now, do we have, do anything else with that?
Well, then we need to get an ordinance number and introduce that.
All righty.
1676, excuse me, 1675.
Also move, Mr. Chairman?
Support.
All right, it's been moved by Councilman Ficassi and supported by Councilman Mandelbaum that we will be doing this movement ordinance to be enacted.
No, introduce. Introducing that ordinance.
Introducing, yeah, because, right. Introducing ordinance number 1675. Is there any discussion? Not, all those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ordinance is now introduced. All right, anything else?
Nothing, thank you.
Nothing there, all right. Madam Clerk, anything from you?
No, nothing, thank you.
All right. I don't think we have any issues with the schedule or anything else for today's meeting. So I know you all are not ready to go home yet, right? All right then, well, we'll just call this meeting adjourned.